And welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is any agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, council staff have no agenda changes to present this evening.
Okay, next thing I'm going to do is open up for public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda? Seeing no movement from the audience, we'll close the public forum and I'm going to go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for May 24th, 2021 as presented.
Second. Have the motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, and the consent agenda passes. Now we'll move on to unfinished business, and the only item under unfinished business is a public hearing for 322 Harvey. I will open that public forum now. I believe we have representation for the property here this evening. So I would ask Ken to step up to the mic. The council may have some questions, but if you could just let us know what your intentions are with this newly acquired property, maybe we can put this issue to bed.
Yeah, I hope we can. Yes, we, um...
Last name?
Oh, Ken Conley. Conley, C-L-Y. Yes, you know, we bought the property across the street from my house, which is, we did a 321 Harvey. And so we bought that from Donnie Stebbins last month. And our desire is to tear it down and, uh, and, uh, get the lot cleaned up. It's been a nuisance for a long time for all the neighbors there and, and we, um, we don't know what our future is there. I'll just tell you why. You know, we, we thought for a long time, if Donnie ever sold it, we'd try to buy it. And, uh, and you probably are aware of my daughter and some of her struggles she's had. She has a lot of trauma in her past, and so she's, uh, she's struggled, um. Anyway, um, we would like to eventually, that's our thought, is that we build a place where she's going to need some place to stay. And we'd like to build a little small house. That's why that property seemed ideal for her. But right now, um, you know, we're just in the process of trying to get her the help she needs, and she's not there yet. And they tell us that help won't come real quick. We're probably looking at five-year, six-year timeframe of, of seeing some, maybe some help for her where she can maybe live on her own. And, um, and so that caused us a little bit of, you know, there's a lot of questions there of how, when to start and how to start, and, and so that's, that's our challenge right now. Our biggest focus right now is trying to get her the help she needs and, uh...
Well, as far as the city's position, you know, we brought this to the attention of the council because it was distressed property. And you've decided to go ahead and raise that house, correct?
That's correct.
And have you not already filed for a permit to do that?
Yes.
And what's your intentions as far as when you think that will be complete?
Wally Becker is going to do it, and, uh, and he, um, he told me, I think he's just going to, when he gets his equipment all in town, you know, he says, because it's right down the street from his, from his shop, he's going to just go ahead and do it whenever he gets his equipment done. He, he talked like between seven days and a month, about, about a week and a half goes when he, when he told me that. So I'm just thinking sometime next month is what I...
So forty-five days would be a reasonable amount of time?
I would like to hope so, yeah. I mean, I mean, it's just really subject to weather probably for Wally and stuff, but I think so. I, I...
Going to take it down to a clean lot then?
Yeah, we're going to take all the foundation out, that basement all out, and then, then just, just fill it in with dirt, yep.
Sounds like that's where we wanted it to head.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Mr. Conley? What do we need on this tonight, Ethan?
Um, I guess the one thing I might add, and I visited with Mr. Conley a little bit about this. In the packet talks, uh, they did intend to leave the garage standing. That would put the lot in violation of our zoning codes because an accessory structure cannot exist without a principal structure. I mean, we've done some exceptions in the past when we had a finite timeline of when a principal structure would come back on a property. But without knowing, I mean, I guess it would be for you all to, I mean, decide on a policy direction you'd like because you're essentially creating a non-conforming use if you don't require every, like it to become an actual clean lot for use. I do know, um, visiting and Mr. Conley can do, I mean, I think that's, keeping the garage is something they saw as maybe some, some value add to purchasing the property when allowed. It's just that it does create a non-conforming structure.
So if we, so if we would approach this, could we put, like a not to exceed, sound like you're not sure when you want to start building, and could we put a, like a two-year time limit on that or a three-year? And then at the end of that period of time, it'd be non-compliance, and then we could request the demolition of the garage or the construction of a home?
Yeah, Ethan had called me about it. The one thing I don't want us to do is have a completely open-ended environment where we're going to condone the accessory structure. I'm appreciative of what he's needing to do, and, and that does occasionally come up, but don't want to get into a situation, we've had that once or twice before, uh, where someone just then suddenly decided or ultimately didn't fit. And there's this garage or this ancillary storage structure on its lot, and it continues to be there, and we didn't ever do anything about it, so someone can argue waiver. So if, if it's going to be allowed to stay, I would agree, some type of timeframe for that to, and that can be reviewed or whatever, but something that would, um, uh, keep it, uh, before us at some point.
What if, I'm going to go into a what-if situation. As Mr. Conley said, he's got a lot of questions about timeframe and what'll be done, when it'll be done. If we grant him a, a two-year, you know, stay on the property, and Mr. Conley decides in a year he's not doing anything with it, and he wants to sell that property to someone else to potentially build a home, what do we do at that time?
Those considerations would not apply to the potential property buyer.
They should not, because it, I'm pausing because, yeah, I'm trying to determine if you can even make it run with the land. I don't, I would prefer you didn't run with the current owner because he's the one making the proposal as to what he intends to do with the property. That exception that you're creating would end with his ownership. New owner would need to come in and do exactly what he's doing, present, and ask for that consideration in their own name at that point as a new owner.
Okay, but they would have to come in...
Especially if we reiterate that as part of this process. If you come in and move to allow the accessory structure to continue to stand on the basis that it will become conforming when a structure or a home is built, that you're going to allow up to two years for that to occur, and that that runs only with the current owner.
There you go. Would that be something that would satisfy you for now, Ken?
Well, I'll be satisfied no matter what. I'll be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not pushing. I told Ethan I'm not, I'm not antagonistic with this at all, you know, yeah. It's, it's funny, in the end, I paid more for it because I thought, but it's only money. It's not a big deal to me. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sweat it either way. In the long view, it's not a big deal.
Can it be renewed? If we go for twenty-four months now, and his situation is...
Yep, you're the ones granting it.
Can we renew it at that time?
You're the ones granting it. You have the opportunity to do that as you see fit.
And you're doing, you're doing what we want done, and that's to clean up the property, keep it maintained, so it's not a blight on the neighborhood.
Then it'd be a building to keep his equipment in to maintain the property. There you go.
Well, yeah, my thought, I'll, I'll share maybe a little more with you, but, um, yeah, because I, like, I talked to Ethan, and I appreciate he's, he shared with me very openly, and that's what I appreciate. My thought is, I didn't want to put any money, because it's, it's, it looks bad. It's a bad, I mean, it looks as bad as a house does, as far as that goes. And, um, and so I didn't want to put any money into it to fix it up, because obviously I'm going to have to tear off siding and put new siding on, re-roof it, if with the possibility that it would have to go possibly be torn down in, in two years, you know? Because it's going to be about three thousand dollars more to do all that. So that's, that was my biggest concern, was that I don't want to put any more money into it and just tear it down in two years. So, um, you know, my, my, what I'm going to use it for really is I, I, um, I taught school in LA when I was younger. And when I came out here, I taught seven years here at Kiersek School. I like children, and I, I've, I do pottery. I did that when I taught school in LA. And so I, I thought I'd bring the children out one, one day a week, and we'd do pottery. That's what, that were great. So that, that was kind of my, my use of the, even the property, was to work with children there, and I wasn't going to use it for much of anything else. I wasn't going to store equipment. I got my equipment stored in my house across the street. But, um, but like I said, you know, if, if this group here feels like it needs to be cleaned up, I don't really, I'm not asking for any special treatment. And if you would rather it got cleaned off, then I'm, I'm very open to doing that. I want to do what you all feel is best for, I don't want to, because I don't want to, I don't want to make a decision that's going to affect how other people look at it and say, hey, you made an exception here, what about me over here? You know, I understand that. I, I, that puts you all in a bad position. I'm not there. I'm not really willing for that, that. You've all been very...
Well, if, if you think putting a new house on that lot is definitely part of your plans, I would, I would like to extend the two years to give you the opportunity to put that plan together. And if you decide to put money into that structure to bring it up to par, even two years from now, if you decide you're not going to build a home on that lot, well, there's always options. You could pick it up and move it. I can give you the name of a good company that can do that for you. We would rather see you, if you want to save that, that structure, go ahead and do what you're going to do. And, uh, you know, we'll give you two years to put together a plan to, uh, to build a house, and if you need two and a half years, we'll come back to us for that extra six months.
Yeah, yeah.
I think my only... Your plan was to demolish the building, though.
What's that?
I think your plan was to raise the building in the next thirty days.
The house, yeah.
Take the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're talking about a detached garage here.
Yeah, I know.
I think my biggest concern is that I'm okay with us extending it for two years and going that route, is that as long as the structure doesn't become a safety hazard for, uh, the citizens, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it. If it starts to deteriorate, then it's something we'd have to visit with.
That's my concern, you know. I'm not going to leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
It just, it just, it just, it's unsightly. It doesn't do anything for the neighborhood, and that's what this is all about anyway. So, um, so, um, yeah, that's my concern too, is that, I, I, I'm with you, Mike.
I would make a motion to grant two years, to create a new structure on that property and leave the garage. It will be in violation, but grant two years to build a resident, a residence, to make it a legal property, and this would be tied to your ownership. And upon selling the property, then the new property owner would have to come to the city to get a permit.
I'd second it, but I got a question real quick. What is this? Does this just extend the public hearing for this for two years, or are we closing this out now and...
I believe we could probably, I mean, knowing the, the city's main concern was the principal structure. So knowing that that is going to be demoed, I think you can actually close the distress because the non-conforming use is actually something that can be brought without a, a distressed property hearing.
It's only half a violation?
I would probably suggest adding to the motion the, um, fact that it runs with the current owner, as we discussed. And then as to, um, the hearing, probably extend it for sixty days because we, we aren't abated yet, because the, the structure isn't down yet. So leaving that in place is not, I, I trust that this will occur, but if you're, you might as well just wait it out and make sure that's been done. Then you can recognize that as part of the process and close it completely.
Do we even make a motion tonight then, or do we wait for sixty days?
You can, you can wait if you wish.
I, I think we just wait. Let's just wait and do it.
That's fine.
Because then at that point it's...
I thought we'd visit with you again in sixty days, Mr. Conley, and, and we'll make this work for you.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like if, in between now and then, if in my judgment it doesn't pay to keep the house, put money into it with the possibility, if I, if I'm, it's looking, it looks, it looks fairly bleak right now at this point, you know, I mean, I shouldn't say that. It looks challenging right now with the current state of our daughter, um, you know, how to proceed. And I don't know how long, so it may be that when Wally comes to take that, I might just say, you know what, Wally, just take it all, you know? And, um, and if I do that, um, I'll let you know. I'll probably let Ethan know. Maybe I'll just inform him that, yeah, it's all been cleaned off now. Now, I do have a question. Um, if I take the garage down, does the pad, the concrete pad have to be taken off also?
I don't think so.
Not be considered flat, so...
Okay. That's, that was my, my thoughts was that, you know, um, yeah.
Well, we'll see you in sixty days then.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate your time, and, uh...
We need, actually, you need a motion to continue this for another sixty days?
Um, you do have a motion, and I don't...
I'll with.
Mike, Mike said a tentative second, so I don't know if he can technically say I didn't second with the addition, and we can let Sam's motion die for...
My motion.
If it got seconded, you technically have to vote.
Well, there were some amended things, so I rescind my second.
Okay, so then if the mayor...
Does anybody want to second Sam's motion?
No. Then it's null and void.
With that then, I would make a motion to revisit this issue.
Do you have a date for?
Three twenty-two.
Yeah, it would be, sorry, let me pull the calendar up here. July twenty-sixth.
That we would revisit the three twenty-two Harvey, um, property on July twenty-sixth.
Second, that one counts.
So we're continuing this public hearing to July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. See you July twenty-sixth, Ken.
Well, I have a question. If, if I do clean this all off, it's all gone, garage and everything, is it needful for me to show up again?
Uh, probably not at that point. If you let Ethan know, we can open it, and then we'll have to legally make a motion to go ahead and close the public, uh, forum at that point.
I'll, I'll keep it to them, and, yeah, I appreciate.
Yeah, well, we'll have to, we'll have to make a motion to close the distressed property hearing is what we'll have to do.
Okay, okay.
But we can do that without you.
Sounds good. Well, if you need me here, I mean, I'm willing to come in.
Oh, we always like to see you, so...
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now that we got through that chunk of old business, we'll move on to new business. And the first thing is a public hearing for consideration of CDBG CV3 program participation. So I will open that public hearing now, and we have representation here this evening.
Hi.
Tell us who you are and...
Crystal from Ransom Financial. Thank you for having me back again tonight. Um, the reason for our public hearing is, um, the city of Hallstead has decided to apply for the CV3 through CDBG, which is the COVID funds for businesses in your city limits. Um, you're going to apply for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that will include administrations. Administration will be coming out of that. This is going to be an application period. I will have your application in by June first at five o'clock. I have sent the preliminary to Ethan today, so he's going to look it over and see if there's any changes or anything. Once we get your paperwork signed tonight, I will load it up, and we will get your ball rolling. So the, the reason for the third round of COVID funds is they have four point five million dollars left over. Uh, the first two rounds of the COVID funding, um, they took first come, first served. So a lot of the small cities did not make the first two rounds. The great thing about third round, they didn't expect to have this, and so they're having an application period, um, which does not mean first come, first served. And if you won money the first two rounds, you are not eligible for these, this round. So, um, that means you guys have a really good spot to be able to get this. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I don't.
Think you answered them last time.
Great. Um, so the reason for the public hearing is also for your public to be able to come and ask questions or hear what's going on. Is there anybody here for it?
Any questions from the newspaper regarding this year? Okay. Ethan, is that what this resolution is for, that we need to pass this evening?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if there's no...
So there's two motions that we need to make regarding this matter then?
Yeah, this evening, we're asking for two motions, one for the resolution and then one to go ahead and approve the, the grant administrator. So...
Well, I'd make a motion to approve resolution numbers...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
You should probably close your public hearing before you make a motion.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
With that, I'll close the public hearing.
There we go, then I'll make a motion. A motion to approve resolution number zero five dash twenty-four dash twenty-one dash zero eight. A resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the twenty-twenty-one Kansas Small Cities Community Development Brock Grant, Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application.
Second.
Heard the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That resolution carries, and I have it in front of me. I'll sign it in a bit.
Okay, so the second one, make a motion to accept the proposal from Ransom Financial Group LLC for grant administration services related to this CDBG CV3 grant if awarded an authorization for the city manager to sign any necessary documentation for said services. Second.
Heard that motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That carries. That takes care of the third round of COVID funding. We look forward to that. I know we've got some businesses in town. We've already discussed this with, so...
That's great.
It'll be good. Well, we will move on to a presentation and funding request from the Kansas Learning Center for Health.
Hi, I'm Carrie Herman. I'm the director at the Kansas Learning Center for Health, and I had sent Ethan some information for you to look at. Last year, you guys were, um, the city was very kind to help us support our pavilion and community herb garden. And we would like to expand on it, and so I had sent some different, um, pictures and stuff, hopefully. You have your file. And what we would like to do, we'd like to request another ten thousand in funding for this year, and it mainly would be to help us build a shed to put, um, our mower and equipment in. One side of the shed would have like a farmer's market for kids to play. And then fence in that grassy area, and it's the grassy area just to the south of the pavilion. And then we also would like to do some stencil paintings of games and things in the parking lot to the north side. Um, and so the funds, depending on how things go with the shed, because pricing of materials is going up, we, we are looking at a couple of other grants as well to help us with doing the stencil project along with finishing out more of the inside of the fenced-in area. It's probably going to take us a couple of years to actually get, um, that whole area children's garden, um, completed. But this would be kind of one phase, a big start to it with the shed and the fencing around it. So that's what we would like to mainly utilize the funds for, um, this year from the city, and I would welcome any questions that you have about the project.
Well, just going by there from time to time and seeing what is out there right now, it's pleasant to see, and it's nice to see people who are going on walks and kids over there sitting and enjoying the shade and, and just the environment, so this will be a real, real addition to the community.
Thank you.
You know, one, one question for you, and I think I ask this every year. And last year was a really bad year for bringing people to Hallstead, wasn't it?
Yes.
And you're anticipating this year being really good, right?
Yes, definitely. Definitely. We still managed to, we've served probably twelve or thirteen thousand this year. The bulk of them have been virtual or us taking it on the road. We have had some schools still attend in person, but, yeah, next year, the pavilion will be really utilized with a lot of the schools, so...
It amazes me how many times people will ask me where we live. They'll say Hallstead, Kansas. Oh, that's where the learning center is at. I mean, you're mentioned quite often by a lot of people. If there's no more questions, I would make a motion to approve the donation to the Learning Center for Health for the garden expansion project in an amount not to exceed, let's say a hundred thousand or ten, ten thousand.
I could say a hundred. We can get the whole thing done.
That was in just ten thousand dollars.
Heard the motion in the second to approve the funding for the Learning Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Congratulations, Carrie. We look forward to seeing what you guys get done over there.
Thank you very much for all your support. We appreciate it.
I know my wife makes me drive her by there in the golf cart so she can look at all the flowers, so...
Yeah, we just got everything planted again for this year, and so we're looking at expanding that. And the one thing I did forget to mention is we're going to do a brick fundraising, um, like the Brick Paver fundraiser, and we're going to have that in that garden area too, and so, um, we're getting everything put together for that, but people come by bricks in memory of somebody or it could be a business. So the funds from that will also, will put the bricks in that area, and those funds will also help us with the expansion, so...
How much are the bricks?
Um, a hundred dollars for four by eight. Um, if you want to do an eight by eight, it'll be one seventy-five.
Could we make you a deal on bricks from Main Street?
Possibly as filler. I talked with Ethan about it, as some filler bricks.
Some limestone.
Thank you, Carrie.
So thank you very much.
Get you in trouble. Okay, next under new business, uh, we have consideration of proposal for industrial park railroad spur maintenance. I believe Ethan's got a spiel on this.
Thank you. We, uh, during our annual inspection of the industrial park railroad spur, we learned that a portion of the track had fallen slightly out of gauge, and then there are some cross ties needing to, um, be replaced. The gauge issue actually would lead the spur to, to become unusable until that is fixed, so that's pretty important for Mill Creek that we get that remedied as soon as possible. The cross ties, I don't know, many of you all remember, it was just last year, but we did, um, replace about every other cross tie, so just saw some more degradation on those cross ties that didn't get replaced, only ten this year as opposed to the fifty I think we did last year. Asking for a project amount of sixteen thousand, which builds in contingency, just in case there's something they don't see. I don't imagine this will change, though, because this is a post-inspection work, and they are mobilized and ready to start tomorrow if we approve it, so...
Was this in, was this in budgeted funds, Ethan?
Yes, we, we budget a certain amount for the industrial parks for every year.
When you mentioned gauge, uh, are we talking about the distance between tracks?
Right.
Ooh, that's not a good thing.
Yep.
No. If there's no more discussion or questions, I'd make a motion to approve proposal from McGrath LLC for track maintenance and replacement of cross ties for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Second. Heard the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Go ahead and get them started tomorrow, Ethan. Now, we do have, uh, an executive session on the agenda this evening. I would entertain that motion for said executive session now, Sam. Where's Denise? I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss contract negotiations, consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA seventy-five, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session: city manager and city attorney.
Second.
You got the motion in the second to adjourn into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at seven fifty PM. Okay, all right. We are in executive session. We'll move to the council room on the other side. We'll move to the council room on the other side.
Okay, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on to the report section of our agenda. And we'll start with governing body. And oh, what the heck, I'll pick on you first tonight, Sam.
That's all right. Been a lot of street work going on in Hallstead. Thanks for your patience in dealing with all of the street work. Everybody will benefit by it. And had a neat little deal out at the golf course. You guys ought to make a trip out to look at it. There is a tree out there called a tulip poplar. And it is in bloom for the first time. They say those trees have to be 12 to 15 years old to bloom. So it's quite a...
Where on the course is it?
It's on hole number eight. It'd be towards the west end, about the middle of it. If you go out there, I'd go through the clubhouse, make sure you're not interfering with play. But it's, you ought to go look at it.
Sounds like something the newspaper should post a picture of.
Cameras?
Same here. Hope we practiced.
Ed?
Nothing.
Well, with that, as you can tell, I have another one of these proclamations that I love so much to read. This one is National Poppy Day proclamation. Whereas poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans and service members. And whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion family adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom in the blood sacrificed by troops in war times. The symbolic use of the poppy comes from the poem "In Flanders' Fields", which movingly begins, "In Flanders' fields the poppies blow between the crosses row on row", referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned-up earth of newly dug soldiers' graves over parts of Belgium and France. And whereas the American Legion family has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the blood shed by those who have served in our U.S. military, and the meaning and symbolism of the poppy mirroring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England and Canada in celebratory fashion on their Remembrance Day, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas wearing a poppy will unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism in honor of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice fighting for our freedom. And whereas May 28th, 2021 would be an appropriate day to designate as National Poppy Day, according to the American Legion family, including American Legion Auxiliary Unit 231 with the support of Congress. Now therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Hallstead, do hereby proclaim May 28th, 2021 as National Poppy Day in the City of Hallstead. And I am further, I further encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors in Hallstead to join in observing this day to honor every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veterans, service members, and their families. Signed and dated on this 24th day of May, 2021. So that's my proclamation for National Poppy Day. And Ethan, am I allowed to bring people from the audience up to the podium at this point? Those of you that may know, our local flower shop has changed ownership, and I would like the new owners to introduce themselves to the public tonight if they'd like to.
Once you take ownership, we will.
Once you take, and do you know when that will be?
Don't know.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to introduce yourselves to the city, and we'll wait.
We appreciate it.
So with that being said, we will move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just some updates on some major projects for the city include, staff are working with auditors on finishing up the 2020 audit and hope to have that presented to you all during one of our meetings in June. City Clerk Reet and I attended state budget training, and all departments continue working on the 2022 budget. I anticipate that we will ask you all to set a budget work session during the next city council meeting. Staff have met with the contractor for 204 Main, and he will be back out again this week, tomorrow actually, with his team for additional site inspection and begin mobilizing equipment. The contract has met with approval from our legal counsel, so we will work on getting that finalized and executed this week. Irrigation controllers finally were delivered to Wedgewood late last week, and installation will be in the coming weeks for those improvements to the irrigation system. The community meeting for the Safe Routes to Schools grant was held last Tuesday. I just want to thank the members of the committee and the council that showed up, and then especially the members of the public who came to that meeting and provided comments on the various proposals that had been suggested. We are working with Lochner, the consultant, to incorporate some of those ideas into the plan for both short and long-term goals on any improvements the city would pursue under subsequent SRTS grants. After discussions with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management staff, we did learn that the city was denied funding for the levee rehabilitation repair from FEMA. From the start of the project, we knew that funding might be a long shot, as thankfully the necessitated repairs to the levee were not an enormous dollar amount. The city did pay for those repairs from the Capital Improvement Fund, and we would have been responsible for 25% of that project regardless. But it was a little disappointing to hear that we didn't qualify for that threshold to get some of those covered by grant money. On good news on the grant front though, we did get our final information sent to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management for the two new storm sirens. That project did come in slightly higher than the estimate we used when we applied for the grant originally. But we do believe that we will receive just over $32,500 in reimbursement for that almost $49,000 project. The city has not yet received an anticipated start date for the security improvements at our various city facilities, but we do know the vendor has ordered the product following receipt of those initial installments. The city also received preliminary plat from Engineer Forquer recently for the Powers property, and we are currently conducting our review on that document before it starts the process by going to the Planning Commission, and eventually will find its way before you all. The League of Kansas Municipalities Leadership Summit and Mayor's Conference will be held in Lawrence this year on June 18th and 19th, which is a Friday and a Saturday. The room block does close soon, so if you do want to attend that, please let me know by the end of day tomorrow, so I can get you registered and booked for that conference. It is generally geared at elected officials, and there's some good information. So if you have Friday and Saturday free in June, let me know, and we can get you registered. It is in person, and they will follow any local safety and mask protocols that are set to be in place in Lawrence at that time. And then a reminder that if you do plan to file for office, the deadline is Tuesday, June 1st at noon. City Hall can provide anyone interested with the necessary documents, but I just note you still must file those documents and pay the fee or turn in your signature petition to the County Clerk's Office in Newton at the courthouse. And that is all I have this evening, unless there's any questions.
I have a question. On the 204 Main, you said the contractor will be here tomorrow. Have you conveyed to him the questions we had on the saving of the front of the building? And is that something that we need to be available to talk to him about tomorrow?
I don't believe so. I mean, he understands the ask, and that's why I believe there's structural... He's going to have his structural guy out because there's some talk on the best way of the facade because of the way those building fronts are tied of even how to go about demoing a property without causing undue duress on the other structures. But he was aware when Pat and I met with him the first time of the wanting to save as much as possible on that front. So as far as the stone.
Any other questions for Ethan, Council? Well, then I would certainly entertain a motion for adjournment.
I want to hear the Poppy Day proclamation again.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have the motion and the second to adjourn this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are adjourned.